Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome you to the monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees for May 26, 2022, for Tarrant County College District. We're going to call ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:01. We have the quorum present. And before we begin the business of the college, let us just take a moment to observe a moment of silence in remembrance of the victims and their families of our fellow Texans in Uvalde, and also in Buffalo, who suffered horrific tragedy in their communities. Thank you very much. We hope that they may find comfort and peace. So we'll go ahead and go on to the business of the college, and we do have a speaker for public comment, Jonathan Morrison. That's okay. Come on in. You could just state your name, please, and then you'll have, I think, three minutes, please. Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Morrison, and I live at 1915 Carbley Drive. And of course, I am the son of Dr. Morrison, but I'm not here as her son tonight. To here, I'm a member of the community, a small business owner, and a community advocate, and I've been working with a lot of partners in the community. Last night, we had an awesome opportunity last night, and I don't have pictures for you, but I'll send them, and I just wanted you to know, thank you for the outreach that TCC does to the community with the usage of your facilities. And it was an awesome event. We gave suits to 42 seniors, male and female students of Fort Worth ISD that would be graduating and going on to some type of post-secondary success, whether it's college, military, or service in the community. And so I wanted to offer you the opportunity to talk with Dr. Madison and look at this program, and with all that you have going on, I think it's a success. I think that we need to look at the feasibility of reaching out across the county and giving all students this path to success, which is diversity and entrepreneurship and just community outreach that, that's my life now. And I didn't, I never looked at it as a skill. I never looked at it as a tool until I actually returned home from college and just started applying it to help my mother, and it's turned into my vocation. And so I'm just thankful for the opportunities that TCC has afforded me in my life. And I think that if we engage the rest of the community with these opportunities to impact their community and educate their community and inform their community about the opportunities that TCC and the other services and service providers have in the community, that will enhance the profile of TCC and the value that we bring to the community, as well as make our entire community better. So thank you, President Ayala. Thank you, Chancellor LeBlanc. Thank you, all of you guys, and just continue to serve and do your best. Have a great night.
Thank you so much, Jonathan Morrison. We appreciate you coming out and your comments. Okay. We'll go ahead and continue on with item three, which is Board Business Items and Announcements. We'll go start with 3A approval of work session meeting minutes from April 14, 2022. No one has any questions or comments on those, then I just entertain a motion. That's from Dr. Morrison, second by Ms. Wood. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 3B, approval of Board of Trustees meeting minutes from April 28, 2022. Unless anyone has any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
President Ayala, at the risk of seeming vain, I was present.
You were present? Okay, so we need to make that change?
They got my comments.
Okay. We have your comments, but that you weren't present? Okay. Did you get that? Mr. Rock? Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. On April 28th? Yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So we need to have a motion with the change?
So moved.
So moved, and that's with Mr. Greenhill, second by Ms. Wood. Okay. Before we go on to trustee, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I think we need to vote on that. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, before we go on to announcements for all the trustees, just want to make sure that those of you that are new to watching us via livestream and those that are here present, we've had an opportunity to review all of these items. We've had some opportunities to ask some questions as well, so if it seems like we're going through them rather quickly, it's because we have looked at these already and reviewed them during work session. So we'll start out with the remarks with Dr. LeBlanc first. I think you have a special announcement to make, and then we'll go through the trustee remarks.
Right. So, thank you for that. So yesterday, the Fort Worth mayor hosted a celebration of top students graduating high school with workforce-ready credentials, and the students were Tarrant County College students from our early college high school. Do you have that video?
Yes.
Reginald?
Yes, ma'am.
It only takes a few minutes, but it'll really speak to why we're here and we work so hard every day, because it's for the students, so.
Hello, my name is Mariam. Being on the college campus has taught me how to shape my life. Even though I'm still in high school, it still makes me feel like I'm a grown adult.
Also rewarding.
After I leave, I don't have to go to a restaurant or fast food chain to, you know, earn minimum wage.
That's because Mariam Magbagbiola will graduate from Fort Worth ISD's Texas Academy of biomedical sciences on the Tarrant County College Trinity River campus with her associate degree and her patient care technician certification.
They're taught how to do phlebotomy. They can perform EKGs, and they're taught all the rhythm strips just to pass the certification exam. So that's three different jobs you can have right there.
Mariam is confident she will land one of those jobs when she's at UT Tyler next fall studying nursing.
I know that when I go off to the hospital, that I would be able to get paid and be earning some good money so I can, you know, pay off my, whatever amount that I have left for my student loans.
Like all Fort Worth ISD early college high schools, tabs is a blend of college and high school, where students can earn important industry certifications and up to two years of college credit tuition-free. Whether going on to college or into the workplace, students are prepared academically.
The most challenging thing here is my science courses. You have to, you know, be focused, you know, go to your classes, and you know, just, just don't mess around.
And they're prepared experientially.
In these classes, they're allowed to take care of real patients. You bathe them, you get them dressed, so you have to be a little bit more mature than probably an average high school student. This is really just a stepping stone. They can start here and then go as far as they want to go, but it's a great start.
On the TCC Northwest campus, it's a short walk for Karina Torres from Fort Worth ISD's Marine Creek Collegiate Early College High School to her college classes, but it's a big step for her family.
I'm a first-generation college student, so that means my parents came here from Mexico, and I saw what that meant like and what that looked like, so I want to also help my community get through that, and I want to work in those immigration cases and work with children.
Karina is on her way. She will graduate from Marine Creek with her high school diploma and Associate of Arts. She's wrapping up a college Texas government class that aligns with her plans to study social work and law at either TCU or the University of North Texas. She listens.
How do you get enough revenue to fund the things you need?
Participates.
Because that way you can save more money.
And welcomes all learning opportunities.
My first class with everyone, it was like 20-year-olds, 30-year-olds, 60-year-olds. It just sets you in a real-life situation.
She networks with professors, joins student clubs, and enjoys a feeling common in early college high school students: pride.
I've made my own decisions since like sophomore year. It feels like I accomplished something.
And as a volunteer avid tutor, she helps other students accomplish.
She cares about the school, because she's working with the freshman class. She exemplifies what you'd want from an early college high school student, not only because she's extremely studious, but her community service, her volunteering, just her well-roundedness. She makes you feel secure about our future.
To say Nicholas Moore's education journey is remarkable is an understatement.
I am graduating with my Associate of Arts and high school diploma, as well as certifications in Microsoft.
But there's more.
I'll be graduating as a junior.
Yes, he's graduating high school one year early.
I feel very prepared and already have like that college work base, hands-on learning, and already know how to do Word documents, Excel, PowerPoints.
How have you been using your Excel in your accounting classes?
We created like a sample financial statement.
Here's one of our first students to receive Microsoft Office Certification in all three areas.
He's also our first P-Tech graduate, which goes a long way in helping him down the road.
The road leads him next to TCU, where he will major in secondary education, and where he will no doubt continue to take ownership of his learning, as he has in his three years at TCC South Fort Worth ISD Collegiate.
You've got to make sure you show up to class on time. You've got to make sure that you communicate with the professor effectively. Make sure the emails are sent out. Make sure you're passing.
And they got AM class.
All right. Good.
You'd normally find Senior Adriana Coronado keeping the beat on Odie Wyatt's drumline, but on this college decision day, she's front and center to celebrate her college. She's
But I'm not here as her son tonight. To here, here I'm a member of the community, a small business owner and a community advocate. And I've been working with a lot of partners in the community. Last night, we had an awesome opportunity on last night. And I don't have pictures for you, but I'll send them and I just wanted you to know. Thank you um for the outreach that TCC does to the community with the usage of your facilities. And it was an awesome event. We gave suits to forty-two seniors, male and female students of Fort Worth ISD that would be graduating and going on to some type of post-secondary success, whether it's college, military, or service in the community. And so I wanted to offer you the opportunity to talk with Dr. Madison and look at this program. And with all that you have going on, I think it's a success. I think that we need to look at the feasibility of reaching out across the county and giving all students this path to success, which is diversity and entrepreneurship and just community outreach that um that's my life now. And I didn't, I never looked at it as a skill. I never looked at it as a tool until I actually returned home from college and just started applying it to help my mother and it's turned into my vocation. And so I'm just thankful for the opportunities that TCC has afforded me in my life. And I think that if we engage the rest of the community with these opportunities to impact their community and educate their community and inform their community about the opportunities that TCC and the other services and service providers have in the community that will enhance the profile of TCC and the value that we bring to the community as well as make our entire community better. So thank you, President Ayala. Thank you, Chancellor LeBlanc. Thank you, all of you guys. And just continue to serve and do your best. Have a great night.
Thank you so much, Jonathan Morrison. We appreciate you coming out and your comments. Okay. We'll go ahead and continue on with item three, which is board business items and announcements. We'll go start with three A approval of work session meeting minutes from April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, no one has any questions or comments on those? Then I just entertain a motion. That's from Dr. Morrison, second by Ms. Wood. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Three B approval of Board of Trustees meeting minutes from April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Unless anyone has any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
President Ayala, at the risk of seeming vain, I was present.
You were present? Okay, so we need to make that change?
They got my comments.
Okay. We have your comments, but that you weren't present. Okay. Did you get that? Mr. Okay, thank you for bringing that up. On April twenty-eighth, yes, yes. Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, so we need to have a motion with the change.
So moved.
So moved, and that's with Mr. Greenhill, second by Mr. Wood. Okay. Uh, before we go on to trustee, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I think we need to vote on that. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, before we go on to the announcements for all the trustees, uh, just want to make sure that those of you that are new to watching us via live stream and those that are here present, we've had an opportunity to review all of these items. We've had some opportunities to ask some questions as well. So if it seems like we're going through them rather quickly, it's because we have looked at these already and reviewed them during work session. So we'll start out with the remarks with Dr. LeBlanc first. I think you have a special announcement to make and then we'll go through the trustee remarks.
Right, so uh, thank you for that. So yesterday, the Fort Worth mayor hosted a celebration of top students graduating high school with workforce-ready credentials. And the students were Tarrant County College students from our early college high school. Do you have that video? Reginald? It will, it um only takes a few minutes, but it'll really speak to why we're here and we work so hard every day because it's for the students, so.
Hello, my name is Mariam. Being on a college campus has taught me how to shape my life. Even though I'm still in high school, it still makes me feel like I'm a grown adult. After I leave, I don't have to go to a restaurant or fast food chain to, you know, earn minimum wage.
That's because Miriam Magbagbiola will graduate from Fort Worth ISD's Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences on the Tarrant County College Trinity River Campus with her associate degree and her patient care technician certification.
They're taught how to do phlebotomy. They can perform EKGs and they're taught all the rhythm strips just to pass the certification exam. So that's three different jobs you can have right there.
Miriam is confident she will land one of those jobs when she's at UT Tyler next fall studying nursing.
I know that when I go off to the hospital that I would be able to get paid and be earning some good money so I can, you know, pay off my whatever amount that I have left for my student loans.
Like all Fort Worth ISD early college high schools, tabs is a blend of college and high school where students can earn important industry certifications and up to two years of college credit tuition-free. Whether going on to college or into the workplace, students are prepared academically.
The most challenging thing here is my science courses. You have to, you know, be focused, you know, go to your classes and, you know, just, just don't mess around.
And they're prepared experientially.
In these classes, they're allowed to take care of real patients. You bathe them, you get them dressed. So you have to be a little bit more mature than probably an average high school student. This is really just a stepping stone. They can start here and then go as far as they want to go, but it's a great start.
On the TCC Northwest Campus, it's a short walk for Karina Torres from Fort Worth ISD's Marine Creek Collegiate Early College High School to her college classes, but it's a big step for her family.
I'm a first-generation college student, so that means my parents came here from Mexico and I saw what that meant like and what that looked like. So I want to also help my community get through that and I want to work in those immigration cases and work with children.
Karina is on her way. She will graduate from Marine Creek with her high school diploma and Associate of Arts. She's wrapping up a college Texas government class that aligns with her plans to study social work and law at either TCU or the University of North Texas. She listens.
How do you get enough revenue to fund the things you need?
participates.
Because that way you can save more money.
And welcomes all learning opportunities.
My first class with everyone, it was like twenty-year-olds, thirty-year-olds, sixty-year-olds. It just sets you in a real-life situation.
She networks with professors, joins student clubs, and enjoys a feeling common in early college high school students, pride.
I've made my own decisions since like sophomore year. It feels like I accomplished something.
And as a volunteer avid tutor, she helps other students accomplish.
She cares about the school because she's working with the freshman class. She exemplifies what you'd want from an early college high school student, not only because she's extremely studious, but her community service, her volunteering, um, just her well-roundedness. She makes you feel secure about our future.
To say Nicholas Moore's education journey is remarkable is an understatement.
I am graduating with my Associate of Arts and high school diploma as well as certifications in Microsoft.
But there's more.
I'll be graduating as a junior.
Yes, he's graduating high school one year early.
I feel very prepared and already have like that college work base, hands-on learning, and already know how to do Word documents, Excel, PowerPoint.
How have you been using your Excel in your accounting classes?
Uh, we created like a sample financial statement.
Here's one of our first students to receive Microsoft Office Certification in all three areas.
He's also our first P-Tech graduate, which goes a long way in helping him down the road.
The road leads him next to TCU, where he will major in secondary education and where he will no doubt continue to take ownership of his learning as he has in his three years at TCC South Fort Worth ISD Collegiate.
You gotta make sure you show up to class on time. You gotta make sure that you communicate with the professor effectively. Make sure the emails are sent out. Make sure you're passing.
And they got AM class.
All right, good.
You'd normally find Senior Adriana Coronado keeping the beat on Odie Wyatt's drum line. But on this college decision day, she's front and center to celebrate her classmates' achievements and her own. A full-ride scholarship to TCU where she will major in education.
I do want to come back to my home ground and go actually be a teacher at my old elementary school.
But her best decision, she says, was four years ago when she chose Odie Wyatt Collegiate Academy, a partnership with TCC South and a great match for first-generation collegegoers like Adriana.
My family never really experienced that. My tias never experienced that. My mom never experienced that.
She entered the program shy and unsure. That changed.
I've gotten to notice all the students around me and the teachers. So I was, I mainly kind of want to get out of my shell.
She found her voice.
No, it would have been a negative one.
Tutor fellow students in the avid program.
Use examples from your reading to support your response.
And she joined the band.
Seeing her grow from, she used to be this girl that's in her shell and now she's developed into this leader. And it all stems from the things she's learned in early college.
The program actually gave me more of an insight into how college works. To interact with professors, noticing that they have a strict schedule and that I have to really do, have to follow everything.
Follow and then lead.
Because she's in early college, the girl Jordan Ruck is in the band at early college, those students say they want to be a part of early college. She's set the bar high for the students who come behind her.
Early college high schools bring out the extraordinary in ordinary students.
Our kids are normal kids. We have kids at all levels of development, all levels of education.
But what brings them together is knowing they're here for a purpose. As one student said, "We're here because we want to be, not because we have to be." They know more is expected of them here, and they rise to that.
I made the right choice.
Thank you for indulging us in sharing that video.
Thank you for sharing that with us. That's an excellent demonstration of the work that we're doing here in collaboration with the ISD, so that's fantastic. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll continue with the trustee activities. Um, we'll start over with Mr. Hornsby. Do you mind going?
Well, I had the blessed op, had the blessed opportunity to take part in our graduation for our graduates at Tarrant County College. And just to see more so the excitement on the parents, the families' faces, to see the pride that they exhibit in, when I was a counselor, I used to tell students, you thought graduation is for you, it's not for you. Graduation is for your siblings. Graduation is for your parents who are proud of you. And so to see them to walk on the stage and when you got to tell them congratulations, they would, and I, I developed the habit of just listening to their name as their name was being called. So when they walked across the stage, I could call their name too, if I could pronounce it. And they would turn around and look almost startled that I, that I called their name. And but I, I liked it, liked doing that and encouraging them to keep going forward. So we had a great, great time there. I hope next year we go back to regular graduations because I think, I like pomp and circumstance that when Dr. LeBlanc did a great job of conferring the degrees at the end, but nobody was there to hear it. I heard it, but none of the students got to hear, really hear it because they were all gone. And so that, but that's a great moment in your, in your life to be able to hear that and to be acknowledged like that. So thank you all for all that you all did to have this graduation. Um, the staff and the work that they did to set it up and all the volunteers that were there to make sure that everything went well. Um, many people were there to help serve the students, to get the students in the right place, the families in the right place, to make sure that we were in the right place, that we got doffed and donned our robes as well. So we appreciated all the work that was done.
Thank you. It was a wonderful day, wasn't it?
It was a great day.
It was, thank you very much. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
But I did. Well, no, because I think Mr. Kine is going to do it, but I also was at the. I also was at the signing of the Texas A&amp;M Academy that they've got. I think that is such an awesome opportunity.
Yes.
And I hope we get a real good media push on that so that many, many individuals hear about that and learn about that so that they can participate and take part in that as early as they can because I think that's a great opportunity.
Absolutely.
For many of our students to be able to become engineers.
That's right. Thank you, thank you for sharing that. All right, well, over to Ms. Wood. Do you want to go and go next? We're just going to jump around today.
Well, I had the opportunity to go to the Northwest Campus graduation for the Fire Academy, which was. I'm looking back, I was thinking of the pictures. Sorry. Which um was the ninety, I'm going to go ahead and look at my notes so I don't mess this up. But it was the class of ninety-seven, which I thought was really cool. And there were thirty-two graduates. I don't know if you can see in the very back, there's a redheaded, there's two redheaded guys back there, Joshua Boone and Chase Boone. And how this all happened was I met them at a gas station near the Northwest Campus and I asked them when they were graduating because they were wearing their T-shirts. And they told me about it and I got in touch with Dr. Blakenbaker and she gave me all the particulars and that's why I ended up there because I didn't even know about it. And now I have a list of all the graduations, so I'll read a lot more. But the um, the fire departments that were represented, because all of these students are, they're paid or volunteered and they're sponsoring fire departments, I just want to read those. Carrollton Fire and Rescue, DFW Airport Fire Department, Irving Fire Department, Mansfield Fire Department, Grapevine Fire Department, Millothian Fire Department, and North Richland Hills Fire Department, Eagle Mountain Fire Department, Hasslet Fire, Fire and Rescue, Justin Fire Department, Highland Park Department of Public Safety. And the speaker that evening was Ulyss Fire Chief Bennett. And the class captain was Rebecca, I hope I don't mess up her name, Boucher, is that right? Boucher. Um, she did great. She had a great story. It was very inspiring and I was just so proud of all the work that they did. They get up at seven AM or they're there at seven AM through five every day. And some of these people drive hours just to come to TCC campus to get their certification. So these are an amazing group of young women and men and I'm just so proud of them. And thank you, Dr. Blakenbaker, for letting me be a part of that. Um, the last picture is Vice President of Academic Affairs on the left, Thomas Sosa, Dr. Thomas Sosa, and then of course, Dr. Blakenbaker, and then myself, and then Dean, Dr. Sonya Brown. So just thank you so much. It was a great time and I hope that I get to do it many, many more times.
Anything else you'd like to highlight?
Yeah, so the next thing, I was invited to speak on a panel of Women in Leadership in Arlington. It was called Conservative Women of Tarrant County's High T. And I was invited by Dr., I'm sorry, Judge Kimberly Fitzpatrick. And we, the women up there were all on a panel and they asked us different questions about what it was like to be a woman in leadership and we heard some amazing stories. Notice Congresswoman Beth Van Dyne was at the end of the table. The lady next to me is a Chief Justice Womack. And it was just a wonderful time. We got to learn from each other and talk to each other. The lady that I'm standing with right now there, her husband just won in the runoff election. He will be the representative, the state representative to be in the election for November. And her name is Adrian Chessline. Um, so that was, it was just neat to meet with all these women and that's Judge Cynthia Terry. She's the Associate Judge of the Juvenile Courts here in Tarrant County. So it just a great time. Those are the ladies that were at my table and I just appreciate y'all letting me represent. And I have to say a shout out to Dr. Coppola, who did my table decoration. I didn't know what to do and he got that together for me at the last minute. I really appreciate it. And of course, Reg got my bag of little goodies to give away to my guests because everyone that was represented there, whether it was South Lake or different areas, all had gifts. And I was like, I don't know what to do. So Reg was so gracious and got those bags together for me and I really appreciate it. I felt like we represented the college well that day, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Appreciate your sharing that as well. Okay, Mr. Greenhill?
I don't, do I have anything?
I do.
Yes, you do.
Uh-oh. Look at my sheet of paper.
I was going to have to take it over to you.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you very much. I brought, this is something I sent to, to Reg to congratulate Carol Braken, our, our counsel. She got the powerful, she got a powerful purses award, extraordinary woman award. There you go. Sorry. T-three news article. Well, there's Carol.
With all of the celebrates.
Oh, so you were there.
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations.
You guys are all TC. Everybody's celebrating Carol.
I'm not sure what the T-three news article is. I am so sorry. What was that all about? Oh, yes, Partnership South Fort Worth Attending College. Uh, I sent that to Reg. It's a marvelous program. It talks about the T-three and it mentions Tarrant County College in it numerous times. And I'm so proud that we are a part of this organization. That's the Fort Worth Report, news article about the same thing. And I'm proud of the partnerships that we are engaged in, including the most recent one with the mayor in, in regard to partnerships to help education. Now, the next one, Reg, I'm not real sure that you should be showing this. But I too went to the graduation party and Dr. Madison and I noticed our cool shoes and my cool socks. So we took a picture of it and there you see, but we don't have a picture of us. And I think there was a picture of us at the ceremony, but we had cool shoes when nobody saw any of them. Anyway, thank you very much. Yes, there's, there's Teresa, the trustee Ayala, Larry Davis Retirement. We went to the Northwest Campus to, I guess, to, to, it was a, a, a conference with the faculty to discuss issues and so forth and so on. And at the same time, right after the, the, the conference, there was a, a, a going-away party for Larry Davis. It was very interesting. We had a very long conversation and we really enjoyed it. Insofar as snow cones are concerned, trustee Ayala and I, when we were coming into the campus, we noticed students giving away snow cones. And we said we'd have to come back and get a snow cone, but darn it, there were no, they had quit, they had stopped selling snow cones by the time we got there. The young man in the middle of the picture is, is, he, I, I'd like to, to get his name and follow him. He is, he worked for the collegiate, I believe, and is, was in journalism. And he's going to UTA to get his bachelor's degree in journalism. And I'm so proud of to see these students. And the best thing is that you're, you're, you're asking each one of them, what are they doing? What are, where are they going to school? And you get to listen to their stories. And as I said, at the conference, in, in the Northwest Campus, they were saying, well, what gives you satisfaction? That was the first question, very few answers to it. But anyway, the, the, I got up at trustee Ayala's, she pointed a finger at me and said, well, get up and talk about it. And I said, what gives me the most satisfaction is something like this. Is talking with our students and what their stories are, where they're going. Success is within reach. Thank you.
Very good report. Thank you, thank you so much. Mr. Kine?
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, May was busy. I had to look at a calendar just to figure out where I was. So this event right here, Dr. LeBlanc invited the trustees to attend her various leadership forums at each campus. And I was lucky enough to attend the Southeast Campus Leadership Forum, which coincided with Arbor Day festivities. So I got a two-for-one on that particular visit. But in addition to listening to some very inspiring feedback from the faculty and staff at the Southeast Campus as a part of that leadership forum, Dr. Coppola was able to take me through how exactly the campus across various disciplines was celebrating and observing Arbor Day that day. So on the left-hand side, that is the winning poster submission as a part of the art component of the Arbor Day Celebration that was submitted by Maria Coronado and Elena Ramirez. And the hallways were just lined with these fantastic celebrations of exactly how important Arbor Day was, very specifically to that campus. The, the Southeast Campus not only is known for its tremendous accomplishments in terms of sustainability, but also their B-Campus initiative. So I was able to take a tour of the grounds and see exactly how that's been built out over the last several years. So it was a wonderful visit. The next day, the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce sponsors what's called What's Your Big Idea? It is the nation's largest singular entrepreneurship contest for students in grades three through twelve. And Tarrant County College has been a sponsor for a number of years. This year, they were the sponsors for all of the eighth-grade finalists. And this year, it was especially exciting because I was able to accompany my own seventh grader, who was recognized in two different categories as a finalist for submitting a really innovative big idea. She also was able to compete against a member of the faculty of the Engineering Department from UT Arlington in a quiz game about famous inventors and entrepreneurs, and she won. So that was fun to watch her. But that's a great event. Then on May third, as a part of National Teacher Appreciation Week, I was able to take some items of appreciation to the faculty and staff to the early college high school located the Southeast Campus, the Arlington ISD Collegiate High School. That was a great opportunity to connect with those faculty and staff that are just doing such great things for exactly what we were able to see that video on. But you can see over in the lower right-hand corner, that is my friend Melody Fowler, who is the newly-elected president of the Arlington ISD School Board. Um, she helped us all week by recognizing various campuses. But a neat TCC connection there is that she was an English instructor at TCC and she is also the daughter of Dr. J. Artist Bell, who was one of the founders of the Northeast Campus and the first president of the Board of Trustees. So Melody is through and through TCC and was really happy to help make that delivery at the Arlington ISD Collegiate High School. And then I think, let's see, finally, oh, here are all of the slides that Mr. Hornsby wanted to talk about. We, several of us were able to attend the announcement between Texas A&amp;M and Tarrant County College. Chancellor Sharp was on hand to announce the Engineering Academy partnership between the two schools. And I was so proud of Mr. Greenhill for being so well-behaved and really letting, letting the Aggies have their day. It, it was a really exciting announcement. Um, it's going to provide such tremendous access to pathways for engineering for Tarrant County and North Texas. Uh, and, and basically, the, the program is that students will be dual-enrolled at both Texas A&amp;M and Tarrant County College from the beginning. Uh, will complete their core engineering requirements here at the South Campus and then will automatically be invited to complete the rest of their degree. at College Station upon completion of those core requirements. So if you weren't an Aggie to begin with, you might as well become one, Mr. Greenhill. But it was a tremendous and really exciting announcement. And there was such energy and, oh, my gosh.
Oh, gosh.
That speaker, right there, she was such an impressive young woman. She, she just sold the program. Basically, her story was that though she was not able to participate in a TCC A&amp;M relationship, she was able to participate in an engineering academy through Dallas County College. And just all of the doors that that opened for her. And that she has younger siblings, to include a brother located here in Fort Worth, who would really benefit from a Fort Worth, Tarrant County-based program. So we're excited to see how that transforms opportunities for families just like hers. But she was phenomenal. She could come back here and work for Tarrant County College. And that's really, I just wanted to say one final thing about the graduations. To Mr. Hornsby's point, I think sometimes, you know, really the importance of graduations have everything, you know, to do with families. My father is a retired finance professor. And so he's, of course, very proud of all of the academic accomplishments of his children. But I have never seen him as proud of me as when I was able to take back a picture to him of me in regalia for the first time, helping with the TCC graduations. So that was a great moment that continues to give back to families across Tarrant County. So great, great graduation. So thrilled to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you for highlighting all of those activities. It was a very, very busy time. Let's see, we're going to go over to Dr. Morrison.
Good evening. Thank you. It was a special honor for me to be invited as a special guest on an online event called Pajama Praise. It was started about two years ago in March by a young man named Glenn Nixon, who actually was, I first met him probably 30 years ago as a part of the Grow Your Own Teacher Program, which Fort Worth ISD sponsored. And I was the administrator for. And he was a teacher aide, very talented musician under Ms. Harleen Beal. And he went through the program to finish his associate's and his master's. And now he's in a dissertation phase of his doctorate. But he's an outstanding church musician. And he started this nine o'clock on Monday nights during COVID. And he's continued it. And most of the people that he has interviewed are musicians. He wanted me to come and share some of the educational opportunities that TCC has to offer. And of course, he always gives me credit for being a continual mentor to him. So that was a lot of fun. And I got to talk about TCC and some of our great programs, and especially the Engineering Program. And I had the high honor of being invited by the most enthusiastic public servant I have ever met. Reverend Dr. Michael Evans earned the right to a full three-year term of office as mayor of Mansfield. He enjoys every second of his service. His enthusiasm is just so contagious. And he asked me to administer the oath of office. So I was able to do that. I was so excited to do it. And he's joined there by his beautiful high school sweetheart, who's now his wife, and his son, Michael Jr. So City of Mansfield, they were all so gracious and lovely. And that is a lovely, wonderful community. We know we can expect great things from Dr. Evans, Mayor Evans. Yes, thank you.
Yes, and we were able to share the table with him.
He said, tell everybody hello. He misses us, but he wouldn't change places.
We were lucky to share a table with him for many years. Thank you for that. Okay, Mr. Barr.
Well, as I'm sat here listening to everybody, I've thought of a lot of things to talk about. I have to say, I think the most, I guess moving is the right word. Thing that I experienced this month had to be the graduation and watching the expression on the faces of the students as they came across the stage. Secondly, I think the A&amp;M Engineering Academy is an enormous step forward. It's going to pay dividends. And it's interesting. Chancellor Sharp made the point that students coming through these academy programs do better when they get to College Station than the students who've been there all four years. I think that's a compliment to community colleges. That will hold true for TCC students that wind up at A&amp;M. Additionally to that, I was involved with the Leader Prime Program, which met here on the TCC campus. This is a program that was started by Leadership Fort Worth here in Fort Worth. It's aimed at CEOs who are either new to the community or are new in their position. And the class had about 30 people in it. And we had great exposure for TCC. Resno Gates came and talked about the district, about the college. And I particularly want to thank Maria Alvarado, who made all the arrangements. And everything came off perfectly. It was a great day. And it really made TCC look good. I also want to comment on two other things. One is about the TCC Corporate Solutions and Economic Development Department and their new publication, The Lens Magazine. TCC Economics, I'm sorry, Corporate Solutions produces this magazine. I think all the members of the board have seen it. It's online if someone wants to look at it. Like a lot of magazines like this, it has some articles in it that are, I think, far above average because they're really meaningful, addressing issues that businesspeople face on personnel and all sorts of issues. This is a magazine worth reading and following. The significant thing is it received the 2022 Award of Excellence in the category of Corporate Identity Print Collateral at the 28th Annual Communicators Award Competition. There were about 4,000 different entries in that competition. And our magazine got special, got a special award. I also had the opportunity at the Seattle Campus up at Alliance to attend a meeting of the Board of the North Texas Commission. This is business and academic and civic and nonprofit leaders from all over the North Texas area. The board met at the Seattle Campus. It created an opportunity for Dr. Blankenbaker to speak and Shannon Bryant also to speak. And it was, it was well received. It's good to get businesspeople and people like that on our campuses. I applaud that. And lastly, I want to congratulate Michael Evans. Mayor Evans served on this board and played a key role here. And I'm glad to know that Dr. Morrison had the privilege of swearing him in for his first full term as mayor of Mansfield. Great guy and doing good things for Mansfield. That's my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, I'll wrap it up with, to highlight some of the events that happened in particular with Early College High School and students dual-credit enrolled in different classes. But this particular student is a student at Eaton High School. And she was the first ever, and she made history because she was the first student to receive her associate's degree from Eaton. Eaton is a relatively new school over in Hasslet. And she attended our TCC and she received her associate's degree. So she made history at her school. And it was, they interviewed the principal, they interviewed some of her teachers. And she really, one of the things that resonated with me is she said, I may not be the smartest person, but I'm going to work the hardest. And I thought that was, that says a lot about how focused she is. And they also said that she has set a path for other students. And they look forward to having other students enroll in TCC to receive their associate's degree. So congratulations to her. I believe her name was Lilia. Let me make sure I give her, her, Lilia Devas, I think was her last name. So I want to congratulate her. Next, I want to also, there's been several articles about some of the students and the hardships that they face in order to receive their associate's degree. And this one really was very, very touching. This person, she has a family. She experienced quite a bit of just difficulties and challenges as she pursued her associate's degree, but she overcame them. You know, COVID obviously affected her family. But despite everything, she was able to earn her associate's degree. And she's going to be returning back to school and transferring. And she's going to pursue her degree in, I believe, in education. So congratulations to her and all of the students that we have. And want to thank each and every one of you because we are really working very hard, and I know each one of you are as well, to make sure that we're eliminating the barriers that these students have to face in order to continue with their education. So thank you for your work in that area and helping our students. And this here is the Hispanic Alumni Alliance at Texas Christian University. That's my alma mater. And I wanted to show this picture because these are students and these are advisors and different folks from TCC. And also, I want to highlight the one lady on the far right with the purple shirt and the one that's sitting next to me, that Susie Soto, Susie Olmosoto on the far right with the TCU t-shirt. And that's Maria Mason there in the middle. And both of them talked about how influential TCC was in their pathway. They spoke quite a bit about how they were able to complete their classes and then transfer to TCU. But they could not say enough wonderful things about the advisors, the classes, and how well they were prepared when they went to TCU. They both now serve on the National Board for the Alumni Association. And they are both TCC graduates. So we want to congratulate them. And they connected with all of these students and advisors to tell them about what their pathway was like. And also, Susie happens to work in admissions and advising. So she was able to connect with several of them so that they could talk about TCU and for our students that might be interested in transferring. So congratulations to those two. And thank you for everyone that was attending. And finally, I believe I have some things, some pictures, right? So we want to thank, TCC was a sponsor at the Hispanic Women's Network of Texas, the Fort Worth Chapter Golf Tournament. And this is very important because the HWNT has a program where every year they have about 100 young women that they help with scholarships. And TCC Foundation is a partner with them in that we are matching many of their scholarships that they grant. So not only are we just a partner in this particular golf tournament, but we also are partnering with them to further the education of the students in our community. So we had Dan Viegas, who is on our foundation board, Dr. Dai Sanchez. And then we also had Arturo and Rosalinda Martinez, who work here at TCC. And they represented us at the tournament. So it was a very, very well-attended, huge success. And this organization gives about, oh, $200,000 to $300,000 in scholarships every year. So and TCC plays a huge role in supporting their students. So thank you to everyone involved in that. And I think that's all I have. Yes. Okay. It's obviously a very busy month. And so we will go ahead and continue on with the meeting. Was there anything else I need to report on, Mr. Gates? Okay, all right. So we'll continue on with our agenda. And again, for those of you that are new to our meeting, we've gone through many of these items and have had questions answered by our staff. So if we go through them rather quickly, again, we've gone through them in detail. So we'll go to item number four. Consideration and Approval of the Consent Agenda Item. We discussed this. Dr. LeBlanc presented on it. Unless there's any questions, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Barr?
Second.
Second, by Ms. DeKine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to item five. Consideration and Approval of Individual Action Items. This first one is 5A. Consideration and Approval of the Renewal of Microsoft Inc. Technical Support in the Amount of $308,871. Mr. Pacheco, do you mind announcing your name, please, for those that don't know you?
Good afternoon. I'm Bob Pacheco. I'm the Chief Technology Officer here at Tarrant County College District.
Thank you.
So as we discussed last time here, this is, we're taking two service contracts with Microsoft and combining them. And by combining them, we're actually getting better services from that and saving about $145,000 over the year contract.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Pacheco? Entertain a motion?
Not necessarily for him. Just a question. Do we still have to use 1,500 Houston Street as an address? Page five of eight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that. Any other questions, comments? Okay, entertain a motion. Move to approve. That's from Ms. DeKine. And second from Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 5B. Consideration and Approval of Contract with Chambers Engineering for Construction Services on Building B, SACB, and Building D, SACD, renovations on South Campus and Technology and Arts Building, NTAB, on Northeast Campus in the amount of $5,533,586.
Good evening. Susan Allenese, Chief Operating Officer. And this one is a continuation of the classroom renovations that we have a multi-year plan to exercise. One thing I'll point out is since you saw this at our work session, we actually updated the table. We had failed to reduce the contingency line items. So the overall budget is actually less than what was included. The contract amount is correct.
Okay.
Both those changes are highlighted on the documents in front of you.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
Following up on trustee Hornsby's comment that says here that Susan Allenese is the chief executive officer on page two.
Well, we are just full of corrections to our documents today. So, yeah.
I just thought I would, you know, you know.
They're just checking to see if you're really reading the material. And that's good to know, right?
As you guys are well aware, this is a giant packet. And so we have some challenges this month.
One more question. It says furniture to be determined, but it's got $741,348 on it. What is that?
That's our budget for it. Yeah, but we have not contracted for it yet.
I got it. Thank you. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Greenhill?
Second.
Second by Dr. Morrison. No other questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll go on to the next item, 5C. Do you want me to address that or do you want to take?
You can go ahead and read the title and then I'll explain what's going on with it.
Okay, Consideration and Approval of Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number One to Owner-Construction Manager Agreement with Byrne Porter-Hunt for Construction of Building One and Seven at Southeast Campus Renovation and Expansion Project in the Amount of $60,706,609.
So in the spirit of begging forgiveness and needing to identify correction, the board memo that you received actually had the increased budget that we talked about at work session of 70 million. However, because that number was not increased on the agenda that was posted, we can't take action on it this evening. So I apologize for that. And I had a conversation with trustee Ayala before the board meeting about, we have three of you together next Thursday afternoon at 3:30 for a rating agency presentation with Standard and Poor's. And we are interested in having a specially-called meeting at 3 o'clock to take action on this item. And the reason there's an urgency to it is because our bids are only good for 90 days after we receive them. And that expiration date is on June the 6th. And in the current environment, we're concerned that our vendors won't hold them beyond that date. The other challenge is also that every month of a delay can translate into a semester delay when you get into construction timelines. And so we're concerned about the residual effects of that. So with our deepest apologies, we are asking to have a special meeting. And we have three of you, we think we can gather on that date. And we'll be looking for at least a fourth.
You need four?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thursday, the 2nd at 3:00 PM. Here.
So, and part of that too is so that we can meet the requirement to post the agenda.
Yes, we will repost the agenda tomorrow with the correct amount on it.
Because Monday's a holiday.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you, will you give us the time?
Yes, 3:00 PM is what we were thinking because the S and P meetings- Yes, 3:00 PM is what we were thinking because the S and P meeting's at 3:30. So, it shouldn't take five minutes.
Okay, and we'll get more details on that.
Yeah, so, again, apologize for the oversight and inconvenience.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll move on then, because that's going to be pulled from the agenda. Uh, Consideration and Approval of Work Authorization One Amendment to the Agreement with Skanska USA Building, Inc. for the Northwest Campus Redevelopment Project in the Amount of $9,705,541.
Yes, so this, this item is for, um, a, a precursor to the next, uh, guaranteed maximum price, uh, contract that we'll, uh, we'll have with Skanska. And, um, it's for the car- parking lot construction as well as some temporary parking. We added some information at the memo since, uh, the work session to explain that the temporary parking is a very, very small part of this expenditure. It's only 255,000 dollars, I believe, is the amount. Um, and so, we think that's an, an appropriate expense, uh, for that purpose to allow us to transition.
And Ms. Allenese, I was going to mention, didn't you say there was going to be some additional work on those that would, for those parking lots, grading and things like that that needed to be?
Yeah, so, yeah, the site conditions out there, anytime you're next to a body of water, there's some grading, um, conditions that, that need to be addressed out there to, um, to en- ensure that they align with the buildings. And so, uh, they aren't cheap parking lots to build. But you can see that there's a lot of stalls that are associated with that. The other thing we did, too, is we included a, um, a revised, uh, exhibit so that you could see a little bit more clearly where those lots are going to be than the original one that we provided.
Okay. Any other questions from Ms. Allenese? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Greenhill? Okay. Second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 5E. Consideration and Approval for a Material Change on the Northwest Campus Redevelopment Project to Reduce the Scope of Work for Buildings WACB, WHPE, and WBSA.
Um, as, as we discussed at the work session, uh, we continue to try to manage the escalating cost environment of our construction program. And one of the areas that we, um, determined it made more sense to, uh, to take out of our existing agreement at the Northwest Ca- Campus is the reskining of several buildings, uh, beyond the safety requirements and also the removal of some of the, the related projects that it triggered, um, roof replacements and things like that. Until, to delay those decisions until, um, uh, probably five years from now. The one thing that we did since the work session is we added a little bit more information that clarifies the anticipated savings from that of about 17 million dollars and, and spelled that out in the, in the, uh, document, just to memorialize it.
Okay. That 17 is not listed in the agenda, but it is in the documents. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, any questions or comments on that? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, Ms. DeKine?
Second.
And second by Mr., was that Mr. Greenhill? Mr. Hornsby, okay. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 5F. Consideration and Approval Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Bonds, Series 2022, for $400 million. Delegating the Sale of the Bonds, Establishing Parameters for the Sale of the Bonds and Other Services.
Um, yes, so as we talked about, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we are, uh, recommending the sale of the next tranche of debt. Um, as we discussed, we've got sort of a rising interest rate environment. So, we think it's important to, uh, get out there and, and do this now. This reflects funds that we anticipate, um, our cash flow, uh, requiring over the course of the next three years. We have our financial advisors as well as our bond counsel, um, here. If you've got any questions related to that. Uh, we did update that we do have on, on June the 2nd. As we just discussed, our rating agency meeting that several of you guys will be participating in. And, uh, we, the, uh, have the pricing of the bonds, I believe, scheduled for June the 26th.
Is, uh, UMB Banks still going to be our registrar and paying agent? Because that's in the, uh...
I believe so. Yes, okay. Yes, yes.
That's in the resolu- that's in the resolution.
Any other questions or comments on that?
Where is our bond, is she our bond counselor?
Uh, no, actually, those are our financial advisors. But we, is, he's with Jeff Lou Shell's firm. He, you're probably used to seeing that, uh, Mrs. Clark, and he was with us with our last sale.
Okay.
Question?
We have any questions? We have our bond counsel here.
No.
All right.
Where's Jeff Lou Shell? Okay.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we'll entertain a motion.
Tell us about arbitrage.
How much time do we have?
Zero. Sorry.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved from Mr. Hornsby and second by Mr. Greenhill. Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 5G. Consideration and Approval of Amendments to Board Policies, DGBA Local Employee Grievances and DLC Local Employee Performance Faculty Promotion.
Yes, since we saw you last time at the request of the board, we've actually removed the policy related to tenure, and we'll be bringing that back to you. But the other two items are, are included. We also noted in yellow that we added, um, the specificity that, uh, Ms. DeKine, uh, recommended, uh, suggested. That was a great suggestion.
Thank you very much. And we're continuing to review all of these policies on a regular basis. So, I know that, uh, we'll be getting more and more of these over the coming months. But, uh, any questions or comments on the item five, what's listed in 5G?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, well, that's Mr. Greenhill made a motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. DeKine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Consideration and Approval of Creation of Fund 45 Capital Technology ERP, amend, um, uh, FY 2022 Budget and Appropriation of $88,77,685 from Fund 10 to Fund 45, Appropriation of $4,266,109 in Fund 45 for FY 2022 ERP Project Expenditures.
Yes, so this is exciting and a sign of some substantial prog- progress in our organization. We've been working on this for more than a year to prepare our organization for the replacement of the technology backbone of the college. So, not only our administrative activities, but also our student information system. And our intent is to, um, not only improve the experience of students who interact with us and, and the ease with which they're able to, to register for classes and, but also to, um, aid and our employees and the ability to assist students and manage our organization more effectively. Our recommendation to you is to set up a budget for the entire anticipated project and to manage it in a separate fund so we could, um, hold ourselves accountable for our projections. So, th- that is what is accomplished here. One thing I'll note is that, um, we identified in the budget a series of line items that included not only the contract with Anthology, but also, um, the staff, uh, the, uh, the licensing costs for the first few years during implementation. The internal staff will be assigned full-time to the project and backfilled in some way in their normal responsibilities, which is the best practice. Um, also, our contract for our, our project oversight, um, by ISG Consultants. And then also, we'll have contracted staff augmentation that will hire different expertise for things like data migration and, and responsibilities that we'll have internally, and we'll need, um, some expertise associated with that. One thing that we did since the work session, and we, um, emailed out yesterday, I believe, is a, a revised spreadsheet that provided a little bit more detail about what those, um, those staff augmentation agreements are anticipated to look like. Um, and some of these, we will be bringing back to you at future dates to actually authorize the engagements. But it gives you a sense of what our anticipated, um, expenses are with those. Uh, we included, um, also $7 million in contingency. The board will have the opportunity every year to approve our anticipated needs for that fiscal year. Um, in addition, starting in September, we recommend that we will provide, uh, quarterly updates on the project, uh, for you and, and allow you oversight of how our expenditures are going as well.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Comments? Ms. Allenese, just wanted to make a quick comment. Thank you for everyone and for all the additional work that y'all put into answering several questions that we had relative to this. Uh, you know, it's a tremendous amount of money, and we wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence. So, thank you to you and staff and everyone that was involved. Because I know it took a lot of hours for testing and things like that. So, we do appreciate all the, the work that went into this. You know, I know a couple of things that I had mentioned, and I mentioned it at our work session, is that, uh, you know, that I know that there are some things that we asked for them, uh, since they have implemented at a college that's comparable to ours as far as the complexity and size, that, you know, we monitor any opportunities for MWBE spending where we can, and then to continue to monitor that education-to-occupation opportunities wherever we can, uh, particularly in this area, because, uh, again, it's a lot of money. So, but thank you to everyone that's, I mean, I know that it takes a lot. It takes a village of folks to do it. So, thank you for doing it.
That's a good team.
Anyone else? Dr. Morrison, do you have a question?
No, not a question or comment. I want to continually ask us to be aware in all the money that we're spending as to how our training opportunities for our students play into preparing them to be a part of the workforce of the entities that we're spending the money with. Um, and ask those people to also be aware of how they can help us make those opportunities available for our students, not just in the future, but as we proceed through the spending.
Right, absolutely. Through education to occupation, isn't that what we want? That's right. Very good point.
Eight hundred and twenty-five million dollars worth of opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you for that comment. Anyone else? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by, was that Mr. Hornsby? Yes, Mr. Hornsby. Second by Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. I lost my page. Give me a second. Okay. All right. Um, we'll go on to Consideration and Approval of 5I of Contract with Anthology for Enterprise Resource Planning Platform, Student Info in the Amount of $26,263,473 for Ten-Year License and $42,420,050 Implementation and $4 million Travel Expenses.
Yes, so this is the actual contract for the implementation, and it comes in two parts. We have a master agreement that anticipates a ten-year license agreement with them, the first three of which approximately that'll be charged to the project. And then, uh, thereafter, it'll become part of our operating budget. One thing I'll point out is you'll see the tables, um, in the middle of the page that show how that is anticipated to, um, what it's anticipated to cost over that ten-year period. That is based on our, um, user counts that we provided them, uh, today with a little bit of growth baked in. But, um, what the contract calls for is that every three years, we'll do a little bit of a true-up. It's an enterprise license, but it allows us to, um, m- make sure that we're not overpaying by, by allowing risk for growth that we may or may not achieve. And so, every third year, we will, um, do a true-up on those users. And in the event that it's necessary, we'll come back to the board and, and, um, share with them that, um, that we, the, the rate may go up. Um, however, if it does, that's good news. This means our, our growth is, is faster than we would have anticipated, so. Um, the other piece of this is the statement of work that we've been developing over the last six months that includes all of the implementation and training services, uh, that we're acquiring from Anthology. We have a very detailed, uh, statement of work associated with that.
And Ms. Allenese, is, in that statement of work, is there a, some sort of a milestone that, uh, a go, no-go type of language? That in case we find that this is just, you know, not working for us to move forward?
Sure, so, on the front end, one of the things that we negotiated, because the, they're serving as their own implementation team, um, that, uh, we will be working on a project plan this summer that we anticipate, uh, being completed by August. However, contractually, we have, um, said that that needs to be delivered in the form that's acceptable, um, uh, within six months. And if that is, does not occur, then that would be considered breach and allow us to, um, to end the contract, um, in terms of the license agreement as well. So, it's a little bit of belt and suspenders to, to allow that. Um, we don't anticipate any of those problems. We've spent so much time developing the statement of work. We think that the, uh, the, the project plan will follow and be fine. Um, uh, one other thing that I'll mention is that throughout the project, um, there will be myriad of testing that occurs, parallel testing with our existing systems and so on. And there will be a series of go, no-go decisions about going live. That'll be just part of our plan along the way to make sure that we're ready and, and have a successful, um, transition.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Allenese? We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hornsby. Okay, Mr. Hornsby, rather. We'll go, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go on to 5J. Consideration and Approval of Contract Amendment with International Consulting Acquisition Corp., DBA ISG Public Sector for Implementation Oversight of the Anthology Enterprise Resource Planning Software Project for an Amount Not to Exceed $3,244,350.
Yeah, so we, we engaged, um, ISG back at the beginning of this project to help us with the development of the request for proposals, including more than 1,300 requirements associated with the system, um, have a deliberate process about product selection and so on. They've also, um, been very involved in the contract development, include this, including the statement of work. Um, our, uh, request is that we continue their services throughout the implementation process because of their experience implementing these systems and helping us, um, organize, uh, with our, with our vendor and the implementation team to make sure that we are preparing and being responsive as an organization throughout implementation. So, we think this is an important, um, layer of, of organization and a best practice to have a successful implementation. One other thing I'll note, I'm going to have to start looking at all the addresses on everything, Mr. Hornsby, because this one also has 1500 Houston on it. So, so we'll get that corrected.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Allenese?
Will we be getting, of course, this is a long-term project. And, um, will, will we be getting reports on the progress of this? And, and difficulties?
Yes.
Reports from the inspectors and that kind of thing?
Yes, so, um, what we recommended, and we can certainly do whatever the board's preference is, but we're recommending doing quarterly reports to the, the board, starting in September, so that they're not on the same, um, month that you're getting the bond program reports, because that's a lot. In the event that there are issues that need to come to your attention on shorter intervals, then we will certainly have those in front of you. But it's important for us to, to be consistently describing to you guys, um, you know, the progress and how it's going.
Okay. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Greenhill?
Second.
Second by Ms., was that Mr. Kine or Ms. Wood? Oh, Mr. Kine. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Go on, Consideration 5K. Consideration and Approval of Contract with Motorola Solutions to Purchase Replacement Handheld and In-Car Radio Units Motorola APX 6000 and APX 6500 for the District in the Amount of $715,168 and 1 cent.
That 1 cent is very important, apparently, so. So, this is an item that the Police Department had actually submitted for, uh, in preparation for next year's budget, um, uh, because they are at end of life for the radios that they have, um, in their possession. Um, because we've got, uh, contingency, uh, savings this year, and we expect that we'll be able to receive delivery by the end of August, we're recommending that we go ahead and use existing appropriation to order those and receive them this fiscal year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, Ms. Wood and Dr. Morrison, you want to second that? Okay, Dr. Morrison will second. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And 5, uh, let's see, 5L. Consideration and Approval to Sale 1500 St- Houston Street Five, uh, let's see, five L, consideration approval to sale fifteen-hundred Houston Street and parking lot at fifteen-hundred Throckmorton, the Mayowen Center to RBR Real Estate Holdings LLC and/or the City of Fort Worth for total amount of fourteen million dollars and authorize, authorization of Acting Chancellor to execute the documents.
See, now we really can't use that address anymore because we're trying to sell the building, right? That's right. As we shared with you last month, we added this item because we had received an unsolicited proposal from the Omni Hotel to buy the Mayowen Center. You may recall that they actually, we were contracted with them before COVID to do the same thing and that fell through, obviously, with the uncertainty that that generated. They came back to us, we advertised as appropriate to see if there were any other proposers out there. We also obtained a new appraisal that is just under the amount that was offered, and so we're recommending that we sell. The one thing I'll note is that it does say and/or the City of Fort Worth because they're having conversations about the City of Fort Worth actually potentially acquiring the parking lot to build structured parking to serve that larger area and that's certainly acceptable to us. Our, our interest in it is, is receiving the, the complete fee and any activation of that area is a good thing for the tax base. So we've, we've left ourselves the option of how that works itself out.
Talk to us about the hundred-and-twenty-day reconsideration period with two extension periods.
Yeah, so they-
Is that normal?
Yes. They, they, in fact, last time, they had, they had a six-month consideration period and really that's in order for them to work out the details of any incentive packages with the city. It allows them to go through that exercise. This time, we actually, actually requested a shorter period of the four days, excuse me, four months and offered two extensions, one of which would actually have money that they would put at risk in terms of a deposit with us, again, trying to
Close this.
Exorcise the seriousness of trying to get this to closing.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was during that consideration period last time that the deal fell apart.
Yeah.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions, comments? We'll entertain a motion. Okay, Mr. Barr?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Five M, consideration approval of revised proposed redistricting map for presentation to the public for comment as well as approval of a plan for public input into the redistricting process.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're back again to talk about redistricting.
Ms. Bracken, do you mind announcing your name and your title for those that are listening in? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Bracken. I'm the Associate General Counsel of the District.
Thank you.
We have Ms. McBride on Zoom with us and Mr. Gaines is here, oh, and our demographer as well. We're back again to talk about a revised map to begin with. Ms. McBride?
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. It's good to be back with you and as Ms. Bracken indicated, we are here to talk about a revised map based on some comments we received on map one and then to press forward with a proposed public engagement process. So let me start sharing my screen. Why is it not picking up here?
The packet, the most recent version is. Packet like this. Yes, redistricting maps one and two. We can see your screen now, Ms. McBride.
Okay, wonderful. I'll put it in presentation mode. And can you see it in presentation mode?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. So I, as I indicated, we're just going to briefly review map one to place it in context of the revised map two, then make a proposal to you for a public engagement process or strategy and then revisit our board-approved timeline. You'll be pleasantly surprised, this map, this process has gone so smoothly that we're months ahead of where we thought we would be on, on our timeline. You guys have been very studious and very efficient in your work. With respect to Plan One, if you'll remember, Plan One was our first effort just to rebalance the district and to come under that ten percent threshold and more specifically to come under the five percent threshold. And we were able to do so, bringing you at a deviation between your largest and smallest single-member district of being at three-point-four percent. We did receive some feedback because Plan One moved the community of North Richland Hills from Single Member District Four into Single Member District Two. Plan Two retains North Richland Hills in Single Member District Four, but because we continued to have to balance the population, Single Member District Two did have to gain some population. It gains population under Plan Two, a little bit north of that still from Single Member District Four. And as Rocky will share with you, the resulting difference is Single Member District Four is just short of being a thousand people smaller than it was under Plan One and Single Member District Two is just under being a thousand persons larger than it was under Plan One. But Plan Two still brings you in balance and still brings you in balance under the ten percent threshold and under the internal requirement of being under five percent. You're at three-point-seven rather than at three-point-four, but able to maintain a particular community in Single Member District Four. I'm gonna turn it over to Rocky to share any comments that he wants to about Plan One before moving into, into Plan Two, which is for your consideration tonight. Rocky Gardner is the Senior Principal of our demographic team. Matthew Cluck was with you last month and Rocky is, is here tonight.
Get the old guy tonight. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. It's been, it's been a while. I'm an alumni of TCC, by, by the way, a long time ago.
Welcome back. We're glad to hear that.
UTA after that, so, yeah, worked well. Yeah, so it's a pleasure, it's a pleasure to be here. And Lisa kind of stole all my thunder there, really.
Sorry.
It's all right, Lisa. It's all right. So, and we've done a lot of projects together, Lisa and I have. So, I mean, we've seen the slides. I know you guys have read through this pretty well. So we just, if we fast forward through a few of these to, you can see that the Plan One analysis there, you're three-point-four percent. You know, District Two is your largest district and it continues to be the largest district. It just shifted a little bit. And I think if we just go into Plan, if you're okay with you guys, we can just jump to Plan Two, those changes, because I think you guys are all pretty clear on it. And if, keep going there, one more, Lisa, a couple more. Okay, there's the changes. Let's go. And there, this is our differential, again, three-point-seven percent, well within the ten percent. District Two remains your, your largest, you know, District, your District Seven is your smallest and that, but that didn't change. So only two and four changed in this Plan Two. And if we go down a little bit more, Lisa, a couple more slides, we just jump to those. So there's the changes. So you can see that we, the North Richland Hills section has been removed. The area there, the Watauga area, we, we moved it from Chapman down to, what was the road name? I lost the road name here. We moved it south just a little bit. There it is, Terrence Parkway. I should know that one. So we moved that a little bit down, then we went north up there to Terrence Parkway, up to Keller Springs there. So, I mean, Golden Triangle. So that was the only change. So we did, it did make about a thousand-person difference in between two and four, but like Lisa said, well within the, the ten percent tolerance and of course, below the five percent that we, we were trying to target for TCC. And I don't know that I need to, I'm happy to discuss the rationales or questions there. Matthew and I looked at that. Oh, yeah, I forgot. We, we had these. Yes, I forgot we had these. We also have the city and the ISD slides as well. So these Plan One versus Plan Two, you can see it, the, two of the circles are exactly the same because we didn't change it. If you look at, on the left side there, the, where it says North Richland Hills, you can see on the right side, that, that's now blue because it goes back to four. Okay? North of that was the Watauga section, and if you look, the Watauga section just drops to the south a little, little bit. It was really easy to see on there. And then that, that circle to the far north, that's the big section there that we've moved between Golden Triangle and, and North Terrence Parkway there. So those were some pretty straightforward changes there that, that did the trick. We do have another slide here that we, we were asked to show, and I think you guys have seen some large maps of these as well. So it's, it's a little bit tough to, to see on a PowerPoint slide, but we just laid the city boundaries over top of the districts so you could see those. And like I said, I think you will provide a large map, it's a PDF, it's kind of zoomable, that I think would be a little bit, might be a little bit easier if you had some specific questions about some cities. And on the next slide, we had some ISD. We also put the, yeah, independent school districts on, on there as well.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since District Two is mine, I feel like I should ask this question. You said you were removing North Richland Hills, but you're only removing a piece of it.
I'm sorry, yeah, just the section, we, we picked up, yes, we, we had moved some of North Richland Hills, an additional section of North Richland Hills into District Two. And you can see that in Plan Two, we put that back in District Four.
Okay, all right. Yeah, the bulk of North Richland Hills is still in District Two, though.
Okay, yeah.
That's why I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, that little, there's, there's a little label down there. That just happened. That's just a default place for the label. That wasn't necessarily intentional. But yes, that's exactly what we did. Just, just that part back in the District Four. Thank, thank you. That's a good clarification. And like I said, if we go back to the, the ISD or the, again, the ISD slide and the city limit slides were something that you guys asked to, to see. I think that you'll, you know, if you really want to zoom in, zoom in and see the nuts and bolts of that, the large PDF will probably be more, a little bit easier to use. Of course, you have specific questions, we can always go back and answer those. We have time, you know, we have, like Lisa said, we, we're really in pretty good shape here. And then we have these individual, these, these next slides are individual comparisons. Now we can, there's no change between, in District One, we go to the next one, District Two. That's where we, I said, we, we added about a thousand persons from Plan One to Plan Two in, in the Single Member District Two. And you can see there, if we go to the next slide three, there were no changes. Slide four drops off about a thousand persons, but it, but again, we're still well within tolerance with, with these changes. And then slides five, six, and seven, there were no changes at all between Plan One and Plan Two.
Any questions from board members about Plan Two, that is, our, our presentation to you tonight that, or our request to you tonight, our recommendation that you approve giving authority to present Plan Two to the public to receive public comment on, on Plan Two?
Any questions for Ms. McBride? Okay, I think we're, we don't have any additional questions right now. I think we're good.
Okay. So the next request that we had from the last board meeting, we have been talking about different public engagement strategies that are possible, but, but you all had asked us to make a specific recommendation based on our process and based on our maps. And again, just to refresh your memory about the different public engagement, board and public engagement processes that are available or tools that are available, you know, it includes board meetings and workshops, educational meetings with the public and town halls, and specific community meetings as well as engaging your website. But with respect specifically to a proposal for, for Terrence County, because the proposals that we are talking about in Plan One are not relatively large, they're relatively minor and they do not impact all of your single-member districts, they only impact four of your single-member districts, one, two, three, and four. That really impacts our suggestions for what your, your public engagement process should be. So our first suggestion is to really engage your website, and I believe you've seen a preview of the wonderful work that your administration has done in that capacity of creating a link directly from the homepage of your website to a specifically focused redistricting website that would house all of the presentations that we've made to you on redistricting, the proposed map, so the public can see the iteration as well as the timeline and the criteria being used to to evaluate the proposed map, any proposed community hearing dates, and then a mechanism to allow the public to submit comments directly on your website. Go to an email mailbox so that we can review them and then provide them to the board. So the board would have access to those public comments and see how they affect the map. So our first proposal is a robust redistricting website that would include all presentations to the board, the proposed map, timeline and criteria, any proposed community meeting dates, as well as a process for allowing the public to communicate directly in written form in response to proposed map two or to tell us what they like between proposed map one and proposed map two. Then the additional engagement we would suggest is in those single-member districts, one, two, three, and four, where there are actually changes from your current map, that we would host a community meeting in those single-member districts and then host a final public hearing on the day that you are set to adopt a plan. If that public hearing generates significant responses that were not heard either through the online process or in your community meetings in single-member districts one, two, three, or four, you could always make the choice on the day of the public hearing, which is also the day of final adoption, to take those new comments under advisement, delay adoption to your next board meeting since we have so much time in your calendar. But I do think that because we're including a public comment period in writing as well as an opportunity to provide public comments at community-based meetings directly in the single-member districts that are impacted, that we're not likely to hear comments at that public hearing that are significantly different than what we've already heard so that you could go forward at your public hearing after hearing any public comments and have final adoption. So our proposal is present a map two to the public using the robust website process that we have outlined here and then to schedule community meetings in the four single-member districts where there have been changes from the proposed map to your current map and then schedule a date for a final public hearing, which will be the same day as your final adoption. We would be bringing to you at that time any comments received on the public website or at the four community meetings, if they impact the map or affect how it's tweaked in any way. Any questions regarding that proposal? And Jesse, I'm sorry, I know you're there. I did not give you an opportunity to, to chime in regarding that proposal. I'm, I'm sorry, Jesse.
No problem. Thank you very much. This obviously meets or exceeds what we have done in the past. And this is a, a privilege for us to do this kind of a public hearing and let people know about the, the changes and proposed changes. And I think this is certainly exceed anything that we have done in the past, and I think this is good we have here. And as a side comment, I, I hate to say this, but I, after listening to all of what's going on at this college, it makes you extremely proud to be a member of this community and to see the kind of educational opportunities that are available for, not just for our young people, but for persons in our community. People don't have to leave here to get an education anymore. You can get a quality education here and it's inspiring to hear that. And I, I commend all of you. I, I am a product of the Los Angeles Community College System. And Los Angeles is, California is, those of you know, has a three-pronged system. There's a community college system. There's a state college system and then there's a university college system. And I had the great privilege to attend all three. And, and I think that to listen and hear what's going on here is just tremendous. It gives me great hope for the future and great, great pride. And that's all I have. Sorry. Thank you.
No, thank you for that, Mr. Gaines. We appreciate that. Appreciate that feedback.
Sorry, Lisa.
Oh, no, thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. McBride or Mr. Gaines? Or Mr. Gardner for that clarification? Okay, thank you. All right.
The next step in this process is for the board to discuss potential community engagement. You heard the recommendation from Ms. McBride and Mr. Gaines. The motion might be a little complicated, so I've distributed to everybody kind of the bare bones of what one could look like. The first would be to direct the staff to do what frankly, Mr. Gates' group has already done, which is put together a robust website. And if you are satisfied with the maps as currently drafted, then the, we would post those maps onto the website along with whatever dates, the, and locations the board pleases for these community meetings. You don't necessarily have to make the decisions about those dates tonight. You can direct the staff, if you care to, for us to come up with some dates and for your further consideration.
Yeah, Carol, I think the recommendation is to have at least one meeting in each one of the districts. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I guess without looking, looking at the, the full map, would that be at least three campuses or do you have that recommendation, Mr. Gaines?
No, I think it's the one that, where there are no changes. I think it's four districts where we're gonna have one meeting.
Four districts, okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay. One, two, three, and four. Yes.
Can we be reminded of our time schedule?
Yes, that's a great question. Yes, that's a great question. If you could remind us of the schedule so we'll know what we have as far as the timeframe, Ms. McBride?
Absolutely. So we weren't scheduled to begin having community meetings or even a public hearing until September of 2022 through November of 2022. We're in a position to begin the public engagement process beginning in June. So we're well ahead of our timeline. Remember, we are trying to complete this process by December of 2022. So when the first data file rolls around in January, the map is already set in stone. So you have a nice chunk of time remaining to complete this public engagement process. And we actually would begin this process well in advance of November of 2022. You know, October of 2022, which is when you're set to begin it under the proposed timeline adopted by the board. Very efficient and very vigorous in your work in this area.
Another alternative would be to go ahead and have the website, the portal on the website, go live with the maps and get, let that be up for a while to let the public be aware of it and see what kind of responses you get. And then maybe in the June or maybe even the August board meeting, at that point in time, you can make decisions about meetings.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm curious, would it be appropriate to post Plan Two as, rather than posting both plans? It would seem to me it's less confusing to just put one plan out there if the board's comfortable with that one plan.
That is certainly acceptable.
I'm comfortable with the one plan. I think Mr. Greenhill...
I'm comfortable with that as well.
I'm trying to figure this out. The city lines are the black lines. What is the district or is it just the color?
Let me see what I know.
Is this the border or is it just the color?
Those are the city boundary lines. The color is the district.
So this right here would be the county's, correct? The colors are very similar, so.
If you're, if you're looking at the city boundary map, because Fort Worth, the city of Fort Worth has boundaries that are a bit elongated. The color for those boundaries on those maps, correct me if I'm wrong, Rocky, is in gray. I mean, sorry, in black. And the city boundaries for other cities with that overlay are in gray so that you can tell the difference, because Fort Worth kind of snakes in and out. So that, those boundaries are in black and then other cities are in gray. Is that correct, Rocky?
I think that is correct. Rocky had the lead.
No, it's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for clarity, are those boundaries based on the current redistricting that the city just did for Fort Worth, or is that based on what was previous? Because they just did their redistricting exercise as well.
I do not know the answer to that. Do you, Lisa?
I do, I do not know the answer to that either. My guess is it is based on what was released to the census. So he would have downloaded the boundaries that were available from the census. So that may not include the latest information.
We'll get that information for you.
Done something like within 30 days.
Okay. If we could just get, just to make sure that we're still, just to make sure we can look at that. Thank you. Because there was some adjustments made on that too. Thanks.
Madam President.
Yes, Dr. Morrison.
It's not the boundaries, the boundaries, city limits, not districts, all right?
Yeah, if the city redrew that district, I don't think that would change our boundaries.
No, I was just curious. I know, but I just was curious because I didn't know if this was based on what they've done, what they've done previous. That's all. It's not going to change ours now.
Yeah, if I could just say, the city's boundaries have nothing to do with our...
Right, I was just curious.
And Fort Worth, as you know, is, they are in a high-growth mode all the time. They're in Wise County, they're in Parker County, they're in Benton County.
Right.
So, you know, that's a whole different...
Thank you for the clarification.
And so the ISD and the city boundaries that are on there, those are the external boundaries of both those entities, not any of the internal boundaries. So the city council member districts and the individual school districts, single-member district boundaries are not drawn on either map. It's the external boundaries. So unless they annex or detached any land, those should be the current boundaries.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? So right now, the question is, we can move forward with the, the consideration is to move forward with the portal and post the one map.
Map Two.
Map Two. And then see where that goes before we decide on how to move forward with the number of meetings and where.
Correct.
Okay. Does that? Does that make sense? Okay.
Especially for one, two, three, and four.
Right.
Five, six.
Yeah, only changes on one, two, three, and four.
I know it.
So just, we try to make sure you are in.
So Ms. Bracken, is there anything we would, would you want us to change the proposal of language here just to maybe set a date that when we revisit this or what do you recommend?
I don't think that's necessary. I think at this point, you can just direct staff to open the portal. And we will make, take, make that happen. And then we can bring you a report in June as to whatever response we've had from that map. And that will maybe inform the board's decision a little better about when and how many and where they would like to have those meetings.
Okay, all right. So what you need from us is a motion to just direct your staff on the portal at this point.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Is there any further discussion before we move forward with the recommendation? No? Okay. All right. Would anyone like to make the motion? Ms. Bracken has given us some proposed language for consideration for the motion.
I suggest this language doesn't work, so. Would you like to summarize what we just said and we make that motion?
Would anyone care to make a motion to direct staff to create a portal on the TCC website to display Map Two as currently drawn, together with redistricting materials? And potentially also, if it's the board's wish, also the maps that show the city and ISD boundary lines, if you would care for us to do so.
I don't think we need, that just makes it confusing.
Okay, just the, just the map then and redistricting materials. And together with a feature that would allow members of the public to provide written comment through the portal to staff, which we will then relay to the board.
So move? So move?
Second.
Dr. Morrison?
The only thing I would ask to add to that is it ought to be called Proposed Map and not Map Two.
Correct. It will be called Proposed Map.
Proposed Map.
It will be called Proposed Map.
Okay. Dr. Morrison?
You're making the... I accept that amendment.
Okay. Dr. Morrison makes the motion and it's second by Mr. Hornsby. Is that correct? Okay. So everybody clear? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right, thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. McBride, Mr. Mickey Gaines, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, before we get into the monthly financial, I'm sorry, we're gonna take just a short, brief break here and then we'll pick right up. Thank you.
Where does she live?
Where does she live?
I wonder.
Hey. All right. Thank you all for that short break. We'll pick up with item number six, monthly financial report with Ms. Alanese.
Yes, so I'll be brief. No surprises here. We continue the pattern of being behind in our tuition collections. The word about 90% of revenue receipts and then on our expenses, we're right on track at about 61%, which is equivalent to where we were last year. Be happy to answer any questions. And I will mention that trustee Ayala and I have been talking about how to make these reports more informative. And so I think between now and probably August, when we come back with the budget, we'll work on formatting and so on to make sure that you're getting the information that you need.
Yes, thank you for that. And if anyone has any suggestions or recommendations, please feel free to share those with Dr. LeBlanc and Susan. Any questions or clarifications? Okay, go ahead, Alanese.
So we have the investment report, and this is the new format again that also helps share with you the transition of our portfolio to some longer-term investments, still fully compliant with the Public Funds Investment Act and very conservative. We will be inviting our financial, our investment advisor back to the board every quarter to give you a fuller update and then also to give you a bench, comparisons to the benchmark investments so that you can see how we're doing.
Those quarterly, those reports, if necessary, could be made a little bit more frequent if there's something that we need to be made aware of.
Yeah, what the reason we were suggesting, yes, and the reason we were suggesting quarterly is that's how often the publications of their benchmarks are so that'll give you some good information to compare how they're doing compared to their peers in investing our assets.
All right, thank you. Do you have anything else there, Ms. Alanese?
So I think we're down to the informational memos under the chancellor's report.
Yes, okay, thank you. Dr. LeBlanc, chancellor's report.
So, thank you. Big picture, you have a list of all the activities I've participated in or highlights of activities. In terms of the big picture, we're working closely with childcare associates on multiple fronts to talk about making childcare available for us at Tarrant County College and also the possibility of expanding the training for childcare providers. We need, we're in conversation about that. With the public schools, you saw the video, we have a strong partnership with the public schools and the meetings include that with the superintendent summit and other events that the presidents have attended or I have. We, we are a team and we make sure that someone from TCC is always at these special events. And then, of course, the universities, we've already talked about Texas A&amp;M. I did have a brief conversation with the new president of UTA, President Jennifer Cowley, and we agreed to have subsequent meetings, so that's all very good. And you have information, a lot of information. One of the materials that is in your packet is the faculty framework, just to refresh your memory. We've done a lot and I really appreciate your support on approving the policies. The questions are all good and each time we go back and review, we make it better. The point is that the conversations we've been having with faculty instructional leaders are significant and they're making things better for our students and that's what it's all about. So, big picture, that's, that's what I have and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Want to have any questions for Dr. LeBlanc about the informational items or clarification?
So, I'm going to walk through the remaining informational items if that's okay.
Certainly, no, go ahead.
So, you ready?
Yes.
The first one, 7B, is just an update on the COVID relief funding. We've been giving you these reports probably quarterly. The deadline for expenditure of funds per the federal government has been extended through May of next year. As you may also recall, we've used a substantial portion of the institutional funds to further the student grant opportunities for students. We'll continue that through this summer. In addition, we've continued to do debt relief. The other lion's share of the spending on the institutional side has been associated with technology and other kinds of supports to continue operating our business and supporting students. We will continue to provide these updates on a quarterly basis. We do, we, so, if you look at page two, there's about $16 million left as of the end of April and we've allocated or planned those funds for $9.8 million in student grants this summer. $4.1 million is encumbered for IT equipment that's already been approved and ordered but we have not yet received, including the Wi-Fi project around the district and some other projects like that. The student debt relief program, 1.6 million, and then some additional IT equipment that we'll, we'll be bringing to you to order as well.
Any clarifications or questions for Ms. Alanese?
Ready for the next one?
Okay.
Okay. So, as you're aware, we've got two contracts for food service on our, at our college and one is ECI here at Trinity River and we've got Subway locations at the other campuses. I think over time, there's been a consistent request for expanded food service at the other campuses and not only to support keeping students present and on campus, but also just to meet the needs of people who are there for long periods of time. The contract for the Subway agreements was expiring and so we have done an RFP and we were pleasantly surprised with some really robust proposals from some vendors. It doesn't technically require board approval because it's revenue only, they pay us a concession on food sales. However, we wanted to make you aware of the proposed, the recommended vendor, which is Genuine Foods. And the intent is for them to provide deli as well as hot food service at all of the campuses. They're offering rent where our current arrangement is concession with minimums. They're actually offering rent with a smaller concession level, but it's roughly the equivalent. They're also making about $200,000 worth of capital improvements at each of our campuses for them to improve the eating areas. We will be sequencing that particularly at places like Northwest where there's some instability with where that will be long-term based on the construction program as well. We went through a process where they also, they came in and did demonstrations and food tastings that included representatives from the campuses and students and they were overwhelmingly supported. One thing we will tell you is that Subway, their agreements actually ended the end of March. They did not agree to extend their service, some of those are individual franchises and so on. And so, we're going to be working with Genuine for the summer to be doing some grab-and-go options for students as well as some food truck options at each of those campuses as well. We don't have that entirely worked out yet, but we are, we are on it and working on those solutions. As far as Trinity River goes, we have 120-day notice for us changing that vendor. And so, we've notified them and they have agreed at this point to stay through the end of the fall term so that we can transition during winter break, which, which makes a lot of sense. But this will provide uniform and equitable food service across all of our campuses, which we're really excited about. Be happy to answer any questions.
So, clarification, we'll no longer have ECI here as of the end of December?
That's correct.
And we'll no longer have Subway as of basically now?
Yes, that is correct.
And where is Genuine located?
You know what, I did not bring their proposal, but they don't have my card in hand. I'll get you that information.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Alanese?
With regards to College for Kids, would there be any food services for them, particularly on like Southeast Campus?
I don't know that there normally is, but I'm looking at any of the presidents or Dr. LeBlanc, do they?
I think they have.
Through the Subway restaurants or?
I don't remember.
They've been closed probably for the last two years. I don't think they did anything, but before then, they ate on campus.
It depended, I, I know over the years that has evolved and changed. I know when my own children attended College for Kids, they, they did not eat on the campus. We either brought our lunch or we, I fed them before they, they came to campus. Later, I noticed that many of the children would go into the bookstore and buy food product from the bookstore, but I don't know that we ever, I, it depended on the campuses. It may be that Southeast did provide food, I don't know that.
We'll get a fuller answer for you though and find out what, what the plan is for the summer and if that creates any kind of a gap that we weren't aware of, so. And the challenge is, is that we very much would have liked Subway to continue through the summer and allow a transition, but they were not interested in doing so.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's a very good question, just to make sure, because when does that, when do those programs start? College for Kids?
I'm looking to my presidents for assistance. Okay, she's, Dr. Blankenbaker is working on an answer.
Okay.
Okay, and then the final informational memo is related to the questions asked about the, the technology and sustainability aspects of our future buildings. And so, one of the things that we wanted to do is provide a little bit of a reminder of the work that we've done over the last year. We folk, it's a long memo and I apologize for that, but we wanted to share with you first with the, the campus redevelopments, some of the very specific things that are there that, that continue and enhance the good work that has been going on for a long time improving our sustainability. In addition, you may recall that we, at your request, had engaged Intelligent Buildings probably a year ago now to help us understand what our use cases and our purpose of technology in our buildings and what we would define a smart building as. They went through an exercise with us to help us identify the, the problems we were trying to solve. One of the big ones was having more unified building automation across our college and the ability to utilize data associated with that and so on. So I've included information just as a reminder about that effort. They are in the process now of fine-tuning that and helping us define some of the specific technology and, and budgets and sequencing and so on of some of that work. And so, they're in their final phase that the, the board approved recently. I have Andy Schonberger from Intelligent Buildings with us remotely as well if you've got any questions. But one of the things that we wanted to emphasize is the various use cases that are identified here and that we are very much intending on having state-of-the-art buildings that are energy efficient and advanced in technology and solving some of the problems that we identified as part of that, that exercise. But be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Comments? You know, Ms. Alanese, when we talk about these intelligent buildings, and I'm sorry, I'm not an expert in this area and I'm not even sure how to ask the question, but can, based on the infrastructure that we're putting in place, will we be able to build on that so that it can, as technology evolves, that we can evolve? We don't have to be tearing down walls and whatever, you know, we can evolve with that.
Absolutely, and I'm going to let Andy answer that question, he'll be far better at it than I will.
Thank you.
Yes, very good question, so that's part of the design standards.
We can't hear you, Andy.
We think you might be on mute, Andy.
We have got.
There you go.
There you are, now we hear you.
Maybe just a lag there, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So that's part of the current phase of work is to get these standards into Tarrant County's design standards so that we get all these basic principles, we tend to call them digital enablement, we get them right around network convergence, availability of data, about security, to enable you to make some decisions later about adding best-of-breed technologies and also reinforcing our confidence in some of the technologies you've already chosen. So, in short, yes, and long answers, we're adding more details into the engineering library for you as we speak.
Thank you for that. Just another quick question. You know, we all have our idea of what an intelligent building is and what the stand, so what is the standard that we, or baseline for that and where do we compare based on the baseline?
Very good question. So, the, the interesting thing about this market is there, the smart building market, I will call it, is there is no baseline. Everyone does it differently and that's why we went through our first scope of work to make sure we had a Tarrant County-specific definition. The focus areas that we, we put together with, with the college around energy efficiency, around measurement of a space usage, around security are all, I would say, very progressive and, and that's the idea is to build the plan so that these become actionable for you. So, the idea is to build on not just the digitization, but also to make something real about, one, our engagement with you, but also, two, what will be deployed in the campus through your capital projects, so around wayfinding and space utilization and security and just how you run your buildings and track operational costs and efficiency. So, some real outputs there that are progressive from what I've seen, you know, across the industry, but also not just basic principles. So, I, I think it's, it's right-sized for where Tarrant County is, also taking into account some of the challenges right now with technology, lead times and cost increases. So, it's still a, a very good position to be in based on the strategy we put together over the last six months.
One other area of the memo that I want to point out is that there were questions about us generating our own power on our campuses and, and part of the response I gave last week had to do with, one of our strategies has been purchasing renewable energy credits to make sure that we are participating in the building of a grid of, of sustainable energy sources. And so, Walt and his team have done a really good job of analyzing that with our utility analyst and enhancing that. In addition, we included information about how that could grow and change over time and that perhaps there might be a time in the future that we want to do some on-campus kinds of energy generation. We're, we're not there yet. I did, in the email that I sent, I believe yesterday, I included a short little video that was good for laypeople like me to understand how that market works. And it wasn't exactly accurate in terms of the entire market in Texas at this point, it's a little dated from that perspective, but I thought it was a good overview, so hopefully you'll take the, the time to take a look at that.
Thank you. Any other questions, clarifications for Ms. Alanese? Randy, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, Dr. LeBlanc.
So, I, I just wanted to share a couple of things. The campuses are always doing excellent work and on South Campus, they hosted a health and wellness fair on May 7th that was very successful. And we want to promote wellness instead of the other and so they're already on their way to doing that. The Northeast Campus, PTK Chapter wins a regional, national awards. So this is our Phi Theta Kappa Honors Program, students are always in leadership, providing leadership on their campuses and leadership among each other and it's always a big success. The aviation students won in aerospace maintenance competition and so that was shared in a press release. And then, the horticulture students don't always get a lot of attention, but they did get national attention and in winning national competition, went, went to North Carolina State University and competed with other community colleges and universities. So, those are just a few highlights of the, really the outstanding work that all of our students are doing, so, thank you.
We'll be going into closed session at this point. So, the TCCD Board will conduct a closed session, meeting as authorized by Section 551 of the Texas Government Code in order to seek the advice of its attorneys, deliberate real property matters, deliberate personnel matters, or to deliberate security devices or security audits. deliberate real property matters, deliberate personnel matters, or to deliberate security devices or security audits. see, I'm sorry, to, we're now reconvene in open session to consider the following.